Lack of a ton you get a professional.
Uh, good evening and welcome to the April fifteenth, twenty twenty four Committee of the Hall Community Development Meeting. Uh, from the South Energy Community Center. I'd like to call this meeting order. Um, moving on to the approval of the agenda, I need a mover in a second. I'll move, move by the mayor's, seconded by councilor's bail. Um, uh, thank you. Uh, there are one proposed change that we have to do um in the closed session. Uh, section D, um, we're not gonna be agreeing with the um with our solicitor today, so we're taking that one off of the uh off of the agenda. And otherwise, are there any other changes that anybody?
Definitely, I just wanna uh ask staff that's okay there um. So the solicitor isn't attending at all and then there's no need to be like, you know, we were thinking he was going to attend around eight o'clock. So.
Right, right, so there is, you know. Yeah, I spoke with the solicitor.
Yep, so we can move through everything that's on here. I mean, there's a lot on here to get to get through potentially, uh depending upon the discussion, so I just thought if there was a time. Uh, if the lawyer was still going to be here at all, that we could make sure that we reduce the agenda, because we're, I think we're back in three weeks, anything's right, so.
So that's excuse me, D exploded.
Close session.
Close session D. We're getting from day.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, alright, any other adjustments related to the agenda? Okay, alright.
Oops, the mayor and the second there was a deputy, sorry, it was the deputy, deputy first, my uncle. Just a promotion, I'm sorry.
Uh, okay, so all in favor? Alright, uh, so moving to number three then, disclosure of curieux interests. Conflict of interest as a general neighbor there, does anybody want to give a clear, none by me. Uh, business arriving arising from the previous committee meeting minutes, if any, any anything from the last meeting? Good, uh, moving on to number five, delegations and presentations, tonight we have none. So that's good, moving on to number six, uh, action items, uh, information items and special items, uh, six A live land use planning. Um, so the number one is a site plan agreement, twenty sixty two County Road twenty two.
Thank you, the um, this is a safe control agreement for the development of commercial landscaping depot, I mentioned that twenty twenty three and road twenty two. Um, the zoning by law that was passed in twenty twenty two, um, which permits this to use on properties. The property is of bingo dwelling and it's a building. The development includes, uh, new entrance to higher twenty two, um, over eight. Uh, eight hundred meters square of new gravel area, four new store building, uh, twenty two meter square building, uh, entrance stage fifteen, a number two store bins. Um, parking building areas and any wood sign outside and prints. Uh, the application is, uh, the site control is committed and includes site management, reading and drainage plan. Modernity impact assessment, that would affect the different points, and the stormwater and the different floor. The site was approved on April eleventh by our C E O with the condition that the order enters into agreement with the township. Um, draft agreement requiring required by the order implement the recommendations of the E I S and stormwater management plan, um, that were submitted. And I think, um, before I go to talk, are there any questions regarding the recommendation?
Um, what recommendation, then we'll have some.
Stop recommendation is that committee recommend the council entering the site thank you over for twenty two, kind of twenty two.
Thank you, alright. Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor, any comments or questions?
Oh, this one here went on and on and on forever and ever, um, I I just after. Is everything met now and clear to go, so Mr. Marcus can sell a shuttle over top, so.
The site is approved, so next, as a condition of approval, you've got to enter into the site of control three, which is what we need. Now, the council needs to approve that right before it's registered on a title. Once that first show title, the conditions are met and that is final and.
Okay, can Mr. Marcus, um, start? Maybe making his, is your driveway in, by the way? No, not yet. Put him in his driveway before and getting things ready before we read off two weeks from now? Like, can we get permission from, who gives us permission? The C E O?
Yeah, it's the, it's our town road, so it's the counties, and we spoke with the county previously about this, they didn't object to that.
No, no, but I'm just saying, can we start work, can he start work on his premises now and getting ready? Before we pass this at the end of the month, like, can he start work tomorrow morning? At that property with permission from us.
No, no, definitely not, but the county is doing the the evidence, if you wanted to do the evidence, but there should be any valid on the site and so. The site player is approved, it's conditional proof right now, um, conditions is at the edges and to the uh.
So we can't give him permission to go until the end of the month, so he loses two keys again. Well.
Not really. Not really, well, you can do the, you can do the entrance way, and he can do the entrance way, and if it passes unanimously, obviously, he's gonna flip her, so.
Okay, I guess, you know, this went on and on and on, I think the man's got probably thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars invested in. In uh, up leads environmental assessments and and, you know, from South Nation, stormwater management, drainage grading. I just find it really, really, it's done with, I'm glad, let's move on, I'm just gonna leave it at that, I just feel. And good luck, Mr. Marcus, I'll be down to buy some walls from you, for sure, so. That's it.
Uh, yeah, but thank you, um, and I echo the, a lot of the same frustrations that Deputy Mayor has as well, and I think. I I. So the the site plan's approved, right? Okay, so what we're proving, what we're approving tonight as a condition of the site plan is the control agreement. What triggers the need for the control? Like, if the site plans agreed on. What, what specifically in the site plan triggers the need to go to that next level? Right, like in some instances, it's six parking spots and in others, it's a water drain extra drainage study, like, what, what took them from, like, there's a lot of work. In my opinion, to do a landscape depot. That, you know, and it's been a long, a long haul, and I know there's a lot of back and forth, but I I just struggle to think if every single person. Who wants to start a tiny small business has to go through seventy pages worth of of reports, we're not gonna have a whole lot of small business open. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, uh, like, that all of this was one hundred percent necessary.
Well. There are, the site was next to weapons. And the site is on, say, maybe camp woodland, and a little bit more identified than the first B I S. So the second E I S, that was now you check that they're working to put those on, they don't need the size requirements. But the E I S, that are the same, and it works, other works, and the E I S, it's a part of the two people that is also part of the metevalating weapons, so. The E I S recommended storm warning issue report to help protect the the weapons, so. Guess for the, in order to protect the maps of period features on the site, is I believe the site like to agree is is necessary, because that's why, um. That's what, um. Required the owner to implement those recommendations that are in the report from these professional.
Good.
Alright.
You're well.
Nothing other than, you know, this, the same frustration, we need to make this as easy as we can for everyone, this is like a second generation. Local guy, this is like the definition of heritage, and it's where we're going, we need to make that as easy as possible. Thanks a lot for doing it, man, and for for doing all the work you do here. I give you some rub.
Who's the character, Wendy? Um, I read this whole thing today, like, it just seemed like everything's passed and everything's good. They didn't remember how many oak trees, cherry trees and everything else was in there, so look. Why do we have to wait a month to pass it? I don't understand it.
This is, yeah, it's just because it's committee, that's alright, so, even though it is just council here, it's such a, it's too many meetings, right, so.
I'll be here.
Any else wish to know?
Oh, good thanks.
You, you, I'm good, yep, so, uh, all I had to say about it was, uh, I mean, you know, yes, we'd like to get these down as quickly as possible. And it looks like you have a pretty, uh, pretty beautiful site there, actually, too, it looks like you put a lot of effort onto where you want to put things, and I think it's gonna, gonna look great as well, you know, and this, so, I thought I was gonna say, good work on the, on the, on the work you've done to get to this point, so. That's my head, yeah, alright, um, okay, so, uh, so. Need a mover, is what I was gonna say, so move by the deputy mayor and seconded by councilor Martell and all of favor. So, councilor's man. But Mart- Martell would do it.
Okay, moving on to, uh, six A two zoning by law housekeeping amendments, and, uh, Wendy, you have this one to take it. And, uh, just to make it easier, everybody, it's on page, uh. See here, looks like.
Yeah, that's seventy two. Of one four, yep.
What is it seventeen?
Seventy three, one forty one.
Okay.
Sure, the chair, uh, we adopted a new zoning by law twenty twenty. Uh, we've, um, worked regularly with the new bylaw, we found there are few small provisions, there are special changes that should be revised and clarified in the time. Of, um, other provision or correcting minor errors, if not, a comment will be filed, if it's verified, then it's about a frame of zoning by law. Uh, through a housekeeping amendment within the first few years of its adoption, so that one engaged with no tech, it's a technical work. And, um, a summary of the process, it's going to go through the process, but. Maybe here to make sure that you guys are okay with the level of involvement that the committee had, and the stages that the committee would be engaged with this, uh, with this amendment, so. Um, first staff will review the requirements with no tech, and no particularly prepared review for the draft, so, but, no, in fact, we're working together, we get a draft together, that will go, um, out for public agency consultation. And then, um, let our process for zoning by law, and staff will schedule the public meeting, um, will be circulated without these twenty days, um, notice, as required by the planning act. Um, the meeting is going to go by the, uh, community board, community development, and at that time, the committee could request that further discussion take place at a future committee meeting. Or they could direct staff to go ahead and prepare the final draft, uh, based on the feedback that's been received. So following the meeting, staff and no tech would review all the comments received from the public and agencies and the committee and prepare a final draft. And then the committee of the whole would review the final draft to make an evaluation to town code, town code make a decision, um, and also the town's decision to be prepared, and of course, there's a twenty days, uh, uphill period. So all of this, um, then I think we done in the fall of this year, we will, uh, complete it. Uh, so the intent of the housekeeping amendment is to provide interpretation clarity and correct all the text and straight narrative without changing the intent of this, the zoning by law, so we're not introducing any new policies here. Um, no tech's provided an estimate of the change, um, twelve fifteen thousand, um, dollars and additional expenses are expected to be appropriated to the public meeting. We budgeted, um, one thousand dollars for the product stores that we to be completed, um, which have been completed. Stop recommendation is that committee, right, staff, will see that the housekeeping has been reduced by law twenty twenty two.
Alright, um, I don't think I have to add that, that's beginning, thank you very much for that, councilor's mail, any comments on this?
No.
Mr. Mayor.
I. Yeah, um, so mine comes down to the cost, I think, more than, more than anything, I mean, twenty K worth of housekeeping? Seems like, like, it's a, it's a huge number. And so that's, if we're not fundamentally changing anything, we're correcting sp- spell, spelling errors?
I I would just be spelling errors, but providing clarification, so an example would be the floodplain in the schedules of our zoning by law. We are so like, I would say that the floodplain, uh, represents the one hundred hundred floodplain plus five meters for a relief action, that five is when we were required to account for that in the E I S. Um, and that would be just below the state law, it's obviously, we don't have to count the way that crushed on the certification river, um, but, uh. The floodplain that we have doesn't account for the way that pushed along the state line, so we would add that five hundred meters of the way as well, but let me say, we would hear some, um, someone who's talking. It's also some language around.
Is that just, that, that's one example, and what I was struggling with is there aren't examples of what would, would be changed?
So that's why I wanted to bring the process to committee first, if we want to review the items that are being changed before we go to public meeting, we could have committee review that. Before we schedule a public meeting, I think the first draft could be ready, um, be ready for May, so, and May or April, we bring it to committee, and then we're going to schedule the public meetings, like, oh, zoning by law, remember the process is. We came to the family, if you want to do this.
So is the, when we did the, the example you just used, so with, when we, uh, if we do so much, I forget, that I remember that process being. Long and onerous and it was, uh, we talked about a lot of stuff. I know we talked about the hundred year floodplain. But did, at that time, did we add the five meters to it then, or we didn't add the five meters? That's a significant change then.
It's just the one hundred meter level. That's it, and it doesn't, it doesn't have the five meters.
It doesn't add five meters?
That how it's shown on the schedule, which, I I think it is kind of hard to read on the P D F there, but that schedule, uh, would be the only closer for them actually add the five meters. You know, if someone had a plenty application, it would look, depends on how close they're capable of, they probably have to do a, um, a survey to figure out exactly where the flood plain elevation is, but. Um, seeing it on the zoning by law is is helpful, you know.
Okay, so we spent a ton of money to get that zoning by law, you know, done, and and it was a long process with public meetings and all that. How do we get to the, like, where we still have to do twenty thousand dollars worth more work to it? That's a lot of work. Isn't it? From a dollar perspective? Sorry, I didn't mean to phrase it that way.
That's okay, um. So I, the list, the first of this, I summarize a lot to simplify it, but the, the certain no tech gave us other tasks that they even complete is. I think maybe three times this long of the, all the steps and the services they would be providing, uh, when it came to things like the public meeting, or second time public meeting, and asked. I would like them to do that, again, so that's preferred to have our planners here with public meeting, I know it means. I think to generate proud and a lot of, even though we're not making any quality changes, so I prefer to have a planner share, so that, that's an expense, an expense we could have back on, and I think that's necessary. Um, we could look for other ways to, uh, less support on all we have.
Yeah, so, so when I, the way that I read it is that the, like, the dollar value that they've quoted. And to get us to the twenty is only to do the housekeeping amendment portion. If there's anything else that needs to be done for Z B L, they're gonna do it in addition to that, and it's gonna cost us even more. So two, two questions, one, do we have to do it that way, or can we wait? Um, till we actually have something else that we need to adjust and maybe have it built into this dollar value, and second is. We did spend a lot of money and it's taxpayer dollars, and my expect, and maybe this is, and and don't take this the wrong way, because I tend to say things the wrong way, um. Shouldn't we have gotten, like, did we get the value that we should have gotten? In the original Z B L, because doing twenty thousand dollars worth of additions after the exhaustive process that we went through seems like a lot to me.
I think, um. The chair, the, the process that we now people will be able to create this new thing by law, it wasn't just, um, an adjustment or update to be able to do the brand new zone by law. Um, that process was much longer than what owners then, I think, staff or council owners had. Thought that it could be when we started the concept, so, um, I don't know what the final cost of that was, but I'm, I'm sure it was.
Think my question relates more to the twenty thousand more I would spend, and how did we end up with twenty thousand left? Twenty thousand dollars worth of work to do when we did such a, an exhaustive process?
Uh, through, through the chair, there's a, the twenty thousand of the stadium that was funded for, I think, what the ask was twelve five to fifteen thousand for no tax, so.
We don't. Fifty.
Yeah, so even then fifteen, like, we, that's the topic, and we will have to spend twenty thousand dollars.
Thank. I think my question is more, it was a, it was a process, and I I get that it was a new by law and, and, you know, no tech, that's their job, that's what they do. How do we end up a year later, a year and a half later, whatever it is, two years later, at this point where, where we're spending fifteen thousand dollars from back and fix? Because it's a fix, it's a house, it's called housekeeping, it's not something new, it's fixing what's there, so how do we end up there? That's a lot. That's more what my question is, I'm trying to be respectful in the way I asked it, but.
The chairman, would he care to, um, write a law like an itemize? That's to show them the cost right there? For the next meeting?
Yeah, like, I'm, I'm not gonna vote in favor of this tonight, I, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm, but I, because I don't know what I'm actually voting, like. By the five, whatever the change to the riverfront flood thing was, I, I mean, I think we should. If there is going to be, I know it says there, there are no changes, but we have to answer to that in the public, and if I don't know what I'm. Voting on or what I'm spending the money on, I'm gonna struggle to support it, so for me, I would like to see what, what those items are and why they're changing. That's just me, and to be fair to everybody else. I think that's all, I.
Uh, no, I just echo the twenty grand, I don't think we're reinventing the wheel here. Um, I like to suggest maybe have no tech come to us and explain the housekeeping, what, what is housekeeping? You know, um, the definition of, of, of what they're gonna do for us. And again, I'll echo this, why does it take six months? You know, by the time we get it. In September, we'll be going through our public meetings, and we won't even get done this year, probably. So I just, and that I can live with. But. I would suggest if we have no tech, maybe. Come here and explain what the housekeeping is gonna be.
Okay.
A payment service call, as we would say.
Uh, you want to continue it?
So, the chairman, uh, basically the example of my fault, so the public meeting, the apple prize in June, the fall, and in June, or in July, so. Would be during competition over the summer, and, um, with, with that schedule, it goes out, but, um, I believe it could be done by September. Having known time coming to introduce the topic and share a housekeeping amendment at halftime, there's gonna be on the box to that, so we should keep that, um, in mind, but we certainly invite.
I agree with you.
I would also add that for our previous zoning by law, so we should just move on to the next meeting. I think those ones, as, as well as, I wasn't here for those, but I reviewed them and I didn't see them, it's a regular process when you got things in file. It's always on something that isn't one that you need.
And do we have a list, by the way, you have a, do you have a list already of what you know for sure is housekeeping, or is it already, and then on top of that, they'll look for more? Or is it the list that we have, is what they're editing space?
There are all the past two years I have for this, um, items that I'd like to be verified in.
And but is that the list in its entirety, or whether it's more added, that they'll identify as an analysis?
The chair, they're, they're waiting more, or they're getting rid of the contract, or you're like, oh, competition, or that's awful.
It's a good, so, through the chair, do you have a ballpark, how many items are on your list? Just roughly.
I was just twenty.
Twenty?
Fifteen, twenty?
So fifteen, it's a thousand bucks, so.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, you had something? Yeah, I, I, again, I, I, when I think back to what housekeeping means, you know, to me, and then, you know, when you look through and you see it's exclusive, any fees. That are associated with an O L T hearing, if there's an appeal, and then I kind of go, well, why would there be an O L T hearing or appeal? To a housekeeping item, not, in my head, just seems like I'm lacking some information that I probably should have, that's all. Like, you're not gonna have an O L T hearing over something that's exist. With our, with our by law, the way that it is, it would be the change to the by law, but the O L T would be triggered from. So. So.
Awesome, from filing a deal, if you felt like something was done unfairly, or if it, it felt like, uh, somebody did it for a while, like, or supplement, or something, or policy statement, like. Yes, um, I don't think that Stephen, Stephen's not written there, um, and he should have an appeal, it's just for clarity, so that we know if there is an appeal. But there's a significant cost, but there's, um, a, a deal, but we, um, a lot of time was in, just to prepare a package, consent to the, you know. Um, so. I think we just want to hear that those to be over and above.
So, so I didn't call, I didn't, didn't ask for a second, or, especially at this point, because I was thinking, like, go something like this. So I was wondering, and just think, uh, you can only speak a second, uh, this, we have a mayor, is it maybe a conversation where we should move this up to another meeting and see if we can get a little more. Of a, of a drill down list, um, from, from yourself, uh, might need to help us to know what is we're looking at, and I think, I'm just trying to see if we should do that. To get us started, because I think there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of, uh, of, there's a level of comfort that isn't there, it seems like right now, so. Any, you think the same with that?
I, I just had, like, getting back to the house clean, why do we have to house clean those ten or fifteen items? It's on your list, or someone's list, like, can we leave while I'm not along? As we are, are, are official plans now, or do we have to amend? Or are you recommending us to amend it because of these fifty?
The chair, I recommend on these, or in that, to, to provide very, if you're to, to, to be, um, we have. I would say no.
So, um, any, any thoughts of it, maybe tabling this to another meeting and having a discussion again then, I mean, I, we can, we can either, you know. But we can have a vote on this if we want, or we can not do it tonight, and have a, have a more, more, deeper dive into this before you do it. I haven't, I haven't heard support for it, chair, so I'm not sure, okay, I mean, there's our recommendation, but I haven't heard anybody willing to move it either, so. Maybe I can ask, but, okay, so, uh. Okay, we get the feeling we're gonna ask for a mover then, so do I have a mover on this then? Mr. Rich, Mr. C I O, there's a.
Yeah, and through the, uh, through the chair. One of the, one of the items, the like. Part of adding clarity is to avoid additional. Time and cost in trying to. Bring clarity to a, that's, that, that is great, so I know you're looking at. Fifteen thousand as, as, as a lot, but potentially, you could be. Double that in time spent in, 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 in trying to, uh, further, I mean, but we've already identified this. What we would say is a raise, or could resolve some of those, some, some of those issues from, 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 I think, so. Uh, if you feel that there would be, uh, better comfort in us presenting some of those particular items, and that. You know, less, and in giving a look at the next machine with respect to that, you can certainly learn to bring that back.
Yeah, because I don't have a mover anyways, so I guess, that, that's, that sounds like the direction we'll take, that if you're about doing, that'd be great, so then we'll, who will be in for next meeting? Next meeting is okay, is that?
We should, we will bring that forward in the next season, okay? We should, we will bring that forward in the next, uh, season, okay?
Okay, uh, then we'll move on to six A three, discussion regulate the use of signs, uh, Mister C A O, you have that one?
But the last one was tough.
Uh, this was raised, uh, under. Yeah, so, uh, under council, uh, various, most motion, uh, with respect to. Having a wonderful discussion with respect to, um, climate or signage in the, uh, in the municipality, so really. For starting to develop and spend, uh, a lot of time with respect to, uh. The sort of signage by law, uh, I thought that it would be harder served to, uh, have a discussion in that we are, whether we are looking at. Any of all the signage, uh, like, well, you can, you know, it's, and you have. Feeling is that you wanna focus in the, uh, signage in relation to that area. Was really just a number of questions to sort of. Stimulate the conversation.
Thank you much, uh, Mister. I think, yeah, and, and, uh, for me, I just, there are more and more, um, signs popping up. Uh, in the township, and, and it's, they're bigger. Um. And they're, they're necessarily advertising, uh, personal businesses or businesses outside, potentially outside of the township. Uh, as well, and I, I think of, when we go back, and that this can be a weird aside, but, um. We, we argued, not argued, but we, when the province changed, the minimum. The maximum allowable size for a ship. Right, we, we went, I think it was from a hundred square feet to one sixty. And we were worried that the wind was gonna suddenly pick them up and blow them, and we had to do location. Permits because they weren't located on someone's property quite right, and we were worried about where they were gonna sit, and the wind might. Might get them and they might, they might flip over or whatever. And I, I think a lot of the time, when I see, you know, the magnetic signs especially. With seven concrete blocks holding them down, obviously that's, you know, a consideration that somebody has had. They've realized that putting weights on them to hold them there is a good, what happens? There's, there's one on Highway two, uh, today that got blown over in the wind, um, on a, on a, you know, potential construction site. And it's laying near the highway, flipped over. Right, it's. Some stuff like, like that, and it's throughout the township, but until you start looking for it, you may not actually see it. Um, what triggered me to ask was, on a residential property. A large magnetic sign went up advertising for. Uh, a business that was located outside of our town, our, our, um, municipality. Um, inside our municipality, on, on someone's residential front lawn, and I, I got thinking to myself, is that? Is that right, is it wrong? I, I don't know, but I, what I wanted was, was the discussion at the table to see if there was any interest. In having a further discussion about it, or whether it was just my own problem and I needed to get over. And I just. You know, like, I don't know how you regulate signs, I have no clue, and I don't know that we wanna get into it with bylaw or anything like that either. It seems like it's a, a very large thing to do, but. You know, there's, there, there's so many different kinds, when you start driving and you really, really start looking, there's a ton. Of signs and zero of them other than, other than the ones in our arenas, right, or the only ones that are regulated. Are actually the only ones in our arena, right, I mean, realistically, the, the ones that hang on the walls and. And the, and the ones that go around the boards, other than that, we don't, I don't, to my knowledge, I don't think we have. Uh, any regulation of signs anywhere, I don't think there's any rules to do a signage. Um, maybe to do with a small business that's at home. Um, you know, what they can and can't have out for advertising, but other than that. You know, if, if, if that person had a restaurant in their home, they wouldn't be able to advertise their own restaurant, but they can advertise somebody else's, and I. I just, like, I don't know, for me, I just struggle with that a little bit. And that's one specific instance, but I think it's a much broader discussion, I'm narrowing it down, but. I just, for me, why I, why I asked the C A O to bring it forward, was to see if there was any interest. In, in a discussion, it's a can of worms, I understand it, um, but, and, and it's certainly not, you know. It's not a big thing on my mandate or anything like that, but it just seems to be a growing, a growing issue to me. That's it. Okay, thanks for the, uh, extra introduction on that, and, uh, you know, I, yeah.
Well, uh, I don't see a whole bunch, I mean, I, I know what he's talking about, but I mean, I, I hate to go and tell Sean.
Well, don't, don't mention people.
You know, I hate to tell, well. Uh, a restaurant, but you can't put beside them, advertise in their township. Or a micro brewery. That they wanna bring people in and catch my eye, or, and I will mention, are both regions.
I'm not saying they can't.
No, but I meant to, 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 to discuss, I mean, I, I don't know how to please it first of all. And, and. I really, I like what you said, you have other things more important, and I, and I, and, and I appreciate what you're saying. And, and, uh, the one sign on the corner in, in Cardinal Bottoms, sorry to that. Cause I don't know what, who owns it, what's on it. And that should be at least updated, they should be able to plant off them. Put whatever they want to advertise. Yeah, I mean, that's something maybe by law. I guess we can't do it with, because we don't have a bylaw.
I'm, I'm, you'll talk to the, you'll talk to the.
No, no, I, 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 I'm glad, I'm glad the mayor said, you know, he has other.
It's all, so, and staff have so many other things to worry about.
Yeah, exactly.
Development committee meeting, where, where we look at, look at those.
Yeah, and it's very nice that you brought that up, and, uh. Let's move on, uh, Mister Murdo.
Echoing the, the mayor's point, I can certainly support a, a sign by law, if we're doing it for the right reason, you know, if we're just doing it for aesthetics because we think it's ugly, then.
Yeah.
No, it's free country, you would want, but if we're doing it to protect. Our people and our businesses, that's a totally different thing, you know, like. We don't wanna sign on County Road twenty-two or forty-four that says call Quorum all ground, or they're gonna get better prices, we wanna protect our guy, and you see. Being a business owner, and you see, I can relate to that, and I know Tori wouldn't like a. First choice sign maybe across the street, right in front of, on the sidewalk, and, and his business would be awful. If we're gonna do a sign by law, I'm good for that, but let's do it for the right reasons, for protecting our people, in which case I'm in a hundred percent.
Enter it up, I guess.
He wants to be chairman of the C A O, because we don't have a sign by law before. Because the, the reason I'm asking you, you know, is because of the. The restaurant on Chandler Road. That people always complain about, they can't see, you get off one certain street to the next. And I thought there was a bylaw that they did something with the sign, but. Like, I, I agree with Mister, the mayor, that, uh. They look kind of hideous, some of these signs, I thought, but if we had a bylaw that. Certain size, it looks like it had meeting mandate. Like everyone else, like the city, but the position keeps going, so the sign, you gotta meet the mandate of what the, what the bylaw stays, it's not happening.
Through, through, through the chair, uh, we had very limited, um, action, they, they know, but, uh, in, in that, but it were, uh, circumstances. Uh, we, and we, we would utilize the second triangle for visibility, so within, you know, within that certain distance, so. It, it, that, that's only needed to be raised, so that you had visibility available. But that's, that's about the extent that, that, that we have.
And through the chair, the C A O, do we know of any of our neighboring municipalities, or any sort of sign bylaws, governments? Prescott.
So, through, through the chair, um, certainly the county of Prescott has, we just, um, we can, um. I think that's one, one of the challenges is how. How, how, how far do you go with respect to, you know, um. So, some, something against our driveway, we got in the company, it doesn't, it's a, some, in, in the, in the yard. You know, indicated, you know, asphalt, uh, driveway, right? I don't, I, I don't get the sense that that's. The, the level or degree that, 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 to the, the community or the council wanted to move to, but it's just like. A bigger, like, a bigger sense, like, is it, is it? Uh, like the billboard sign that I'm, both private and. Right of ways, is it just strictly on the right of ways, is it? Or is it not, like, I, and I don't know, right, and that's why, uh, from a, from a staff perspective, without, uh. A, a little better understanding, um, we could just be. Spending in, in lots of time and totally dissthematic, uh, with respect to, you know, what be, what the interest in me, and, and that's really, but. Hoping through a key, just a little bit of it, better understanding.
Sure. So I, I think my intent was to spur a bit of a discussion. Um, it wasn't to make a decision, realistically, I, I didn't think for one second that, um. Out of this discussion tonight, that everybody would say, hey, let's regulate signs, I, not one part of them thought of it, but I wasn't sure how many of the. You know, the people at the table actually had ever considered. You know, that we, one, maybe we do have one, we don't have one, um, you know, what would it look like if, if we were to, you know. Remove magnetic signs, you know, like, what, what would, what would it look like, you know, and, and I think the idea for me was just to begin a conversation. And, and let folks go away and, and think about it and, and see, it wasn't really to come to, let's create the bylaw, it was more, let's have a discussion and see. How people feel about it, and, and then, you know, maybe at some point down the road, we come back and we have a different discussion about it when somebody else, you know, wants to. You know, relive it, I think there's a lot of learning to do when we drive around and we, we have a good look, or we read. What Ken Phil has for bylaw, Ken Phil's is a really strong sign by law, um, you know, I know Brockles isn't, but, you know, things like enforceability. You know, there's so many different facets to it to think about, I don't know that we wanna give direction, I mean, staff time until. The intention was more to have a conversation. And, and, and I do recommend that, uh, that, uh, members take a look at those, at both Prescott as well as North Vancouver, because. I had the, let's call it opportunity to have to do that a little while back for, uh, I was helping somebody else out, and, uh. Um, and, and they are pretty strict, but, you know, and, and they, uh, they're meant to protect the area and make it, you know, after beautification as well as other reasons, obviously. Uh, but it is worth, it's, it's worth, I think, to take a look at them, they're not, they're not, you know, they're not hundreds of pages long, you know, like that, I just probably, if I look at that, and, uh. Maybe bring that back to a conversation later on, so we. I'm gonna put it on the radio.
Yep. The chair, the center of the lines.
I just, exactly, uh, press that, that C A O. Uh, okay, that's a good discussion, um, all right, moving on to six A four, uh, information is proposed changes to regulations under the planning. And proposed new provincial planning policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, this is some information I have for, um, kind of the, uh, problems released. Last week on April tenth, um, some proposed changes to the planning act, in Blueville one eight five, cutting Red, the building or home fact. Um, and, uh, in the home, there was also, uh, a new draft provincial, um, I'm gonna call it, which is all of the statements that was recently different. If I mean, I, I need P P S for two point nine four, um, earlier day comments on the draft in twenty twenty-three. So the product you take, you know, the comments they received from the public and the municipality agency, um, and we have the P S app for, so, um. It, staff haven't had a lot of time to take a look very closely at this, but the comment I think to get is. Uh, only, um, a month, so I want to make sure that I have it. If I'm a committee, you know, the case committee, or if I just want, um, comment to be, uh, preparing to move to the province, so the link for that, if it comes to. Um, for numbers to review and, um. I don't know that I can answer a lot of questions on them, so I can take them away, um, if there are questions.
I think she didn't take the time to read the entire P P S. Good for you. So I, I would have a question then, in regard to that, then, because, um, our biggest one was, well, and I know the response that we got from him and me, but, but. Was there any, I haven't had the chance. Not that I haven't had the chance, I didn't read it, um, yet, so. Did they make any of the changes that we had, had asked, and, and does it? Fix an issue that we have?
I, um. Yeah, I was very pleased to see, and I knew, yes, that, uh, part of servicing is one of the issues we had commented on, and, uh. They should say within rural settlement areas where new development would service by, oh, this is the area, in terms of shot only be permitted. In following circumstances, and then A, B, and C, and C is within rural settlement. Where new development would service by individual onsite water services in combination with municipal, simple, or private, you know. Three services, whereas before, um, touch and search was not included. Maybe we can safely say that should punch. Comments were heard, um, because there are a lot of, um, municipalities without being relevant to.
The, uh, to the C A O, is, is that, uh, specific location I may be referring to within the settlement area, or is it inside the settlement area? Oh, perfect, that's, for that specific example, it works great. The other, uh, thing that I would ask, and, and I'm not sure if that's to the C D C or whether it's C A O, but, um, when it comes to. Oh, shoot. Oh, uh, settlement areas, right, like, we have, the province gave us that ability, right, like, to expand our settlement areas as a, as a right. The C M N D not in. That we just. Yeah, right, so like. For somewhere like Cardinal or, or Spencerville, if, if it, if that sewer line was either, and the line wasn't where it needed to be, we could actually just apply to have the line moved. Expand the settlement.
If the twenty twenty-three draft, the running in, the placement draft, those will change a little bit?
Not sure, okay, all right, okay, I'll just. If that change happened, I'm elated, because it certainly, uh, helps in, in getting projects that may not have moved forward, potentially moving. Or moving forward in a different.
I, 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 uh, through, through the chair, um. Sort of just having that initial glance, uh, it's, it, it's a little bit difficult to determine. What portion is, uh, uh, of twenty twenty-three, uh, lower than forty-eight, and what, what are the additional, the trust considering? So, I think over the, over the next week or so, uh, I am sure that there will be, uh. A number of reviews being, being done, published with respect to what it. Fully needs to make sure that, um, will be interesting, some of those, I would say, are still serious.
Kind of get some chips for that.
Uh, no, I, I've read some with, uh, one that I was really, uh, uh, interested in that, uh. Pre-approach, pre-approach of divisions prior to nineteen ninety-five. Uh, you're gonna use it or lose. And, uh, they're gonna be really strict on that. Uh, according to. When I, uh. Yeah, uh, the Ministry of Housing there, uh, on his, uh, little tape. And that they're gonna be getting more aggressive of, of, uh, taking more and more away, while they already started in, in, uh. P O Hall in New York region affected July one, and I think we're gonna see it. From what I gather from our M P P, you're gonna see more and more of that come down the line, even in our. United talents of pizza greble, where the official plan would be. Maybe a little less taken away powers from them, so. And for me, I think it's great, if they're gonna, like, miss town, and maybe they'll, that's, that's just my feeling, because. I think everybody at the table knows how I feel, but. Getting shovels in the ground, so. I think it's a good thing. That's all. Thank you, uh. Mister Ward.
Mister Seal.
Oh, I hear, what's, the better the mayor, announce. I really don't.
Which my best.
All right, um, and I don't have much to add either actually at this point, so, uh. Okay. Lots of reading this weekend, though. So is there?
No, there, there is, um. No, there's no, no sort of recommendation at all, but I, I think one, one thing that would be helpful is, uh, to know. Whether you're looking as a, as a council to comment. During that period, um, to respect purely, uh, some of the proposed changes, whether they are, um, favorable, uh, not. Not favorable, not far enough, um, but, um, you know, I think, I, I think in some circumstances, uh, it. It's easy for staff to recognize, uh, for instance, uh, the changes, uh, with respect to fashion. Seriously, that we would, uh, certainly, uh, what we call it, that. You know, recognizing that, like, we, we feel that we, we, we will, we, we were heard and that as far as, uh, uh. That and even, uh, it goes, and I think there's a few other areas, but. I think it's just more or less, um, on the very, um, staff to prepare. Uh, a draft for the next C D C and the challenge there is that. So we're like that, uh. We would probably, probably want to take, we really, we really did a really good. Uh, feel for what, what, what some of these proposed changes would mean. And it in turn a little bit better to, to, to difference on that.
Right, and, and with our next council meeting, May sixth, the meeting is due May tenth, I think I saw, right?
Uh, comment period is open until date, uh, May tenth.
And do we need to do something as an act of council to send something off, or is that a thing?
Well, through the, through, through the chair, uh, what was done at the last, uh, was the last one who wants that, uh. We went, uh, you know, a number of executives on the tiny, they were creating and then, then he also would be the sort of, uh, updating the mayor. Uh, you know, who would have assigned that to Leonard and it, it simply had been in that common period, so, um. Yeah, so I mean, I, I think so, uh, I don't know whether, um. You're looking for staff, it was a sort of a trying to prepare you now. A, a draft, uh, response to. For, for the conference.
Fair enough. Yeah, I think I, I, I do think with, uh, respect to M M H and, and, you know, the fact that they actually. You know, made the changes that we, that we'd asked, that they, they do is certainly think that. You know. Thinking and, and recognizing that is, is probably good on our part, uh, and it probably should be done by head of council, so. Um, and on behalf, uh, i- if there are others, um. In there, like, I don't have a track change, so to be able to have two of the documents going side by side is not something I am prepared to do, so. Um, but, but those ones that we, you know, that we wanna. Certainly highlight, I think that that's.
And I think we're only going to start with the areas that are commended in, 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 in the commission. Uh, in, in compare what the, you know, what any of the, uh, changes are with respect to the, you know. To the latest, uh, draft and then, uh, comment based on, based on those differences, right?
Fair enough. So it would make sense then to bring it to next council and say, I'll be to the month, or is that possible? I know it's tight.
It's, it. It, 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 it may be tight in the process. They, 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 they give us all a journey, but, uh, we, we may, we may be able to put together and. Whatever to say is, it, it, it was very rough. Draft. And in, in that take our sense for, for, for against the, it's some sense where. We're going to.
There, there are all items that what we would be commenting on would be items that we commented on before. Or would there be potential that we'd be becoming, commenting on something we haven't already discussed?
I'd say the majority of it would be, uh, common, commenting on, uh, on previous problems. There may, there, there may need additional, I think, or two. Um, I think a, as we work through that, we can see as always, this, you know. Uh, is it aligning necessarily with, uh, with, with the vision of, uh, the council? You know, even if obvious closure, then the rural hack, the thing. Is, uh, if, if members, I think we can spend maybe just a little bit of time seeing through some of those. Highlights and, and just see if there's, you know, some of them, and it's like, oh, we're incredibly blind or. You know, maybe comment, uh, you shouldn't necessarily work with, uh, with, with that also. So, so that, we, they're gonna be in stress. I believe that, uh. Maybe that, that, you know, sort of, we still is not deteriorated.
Okay, and if we, if it doesn't work out that well.
If there's something else for the week after for, uh, C D C and the special, yes, to do, but.
No, rather not to. I don't think we have to get to a special, special council to write the letter to, I mean, I can write a letter anytime to, to municipal affairs and saying, thank you. This is permanent to do it, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think really, uh. As always, there is some, you know, reasonable consensus around, in respect to the, the sort of the. The content of the question.
Thank you. All right, um, so moving on to six. The one discussion on childcare facilities and directed growth strategy. Uh, we'll be, it's good, busy today.
Um, I'll call it, uh, uh, the United County's, uh, so, 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 uh, I'm working on this project, I just say I'm working on this project. It's a pleasure, but so far, no, no, no. Uh, so. Some of this still sound a little bit familiar, but it's a, they've allocated a total of three hundred and ninety seven new license childcare spaces to be created. Um, under the Canada-wide early reading childcare during the growth strategy. Anyways, regardless of that, we've combined to allocate sixty six of these spaces. With funding and rights to the county to support, uh, the strategy implementation. Uh, where the funds cannot be separately planned for the local building, but funds can be provided for minor renovations or retrofit and the recent phases. Uh, startup, I would say, employees, materials, equipment, or office room, and appliances. Ongoing operational funding, uh, and workforce compensation funding. Uh, back and follow the county's initiative project for help in identifying suitable locations in Cardinal or Spencerville. Where efforts of Cardinal's greatest childcare needs were identified. During a presentation to committee in October, members asked staff to continue to support the company. And their initiative of a recognition of how to save the effort in Cardinal. Um. While we continue to investigate options in Cardinal and Spencerville. We have also considered expanding research to include John Town, to, to be constituted to support. Our industrial park employers where access to childcare could be a barrier for employers and employees. Uh, we've identified some land in John Town. Really nearby, we are writing out, um, but maybe suitable for any childcare building. The provincial and federal funding to support the growth strategy, remember, the block coverage purchase of land or the construction of a new building. Um, but it could be possible to gather support or nation's any time contributions from employers that would benefit from the daycare, so. We, uh, identified this land here, uh, on set and drive, it took the axles from Albert Street. Um, we are intentional for the land that continues, um, for, uh, childcare facility, so before we. Go further, make this idea and that's more stat time, just waiting for some community discussion about whether or not, um. Whether or not the committee would support the use of this land for a childcare facility and. Uh, natural, with any marks on visibility, we have a fair opportunity.
Thank you very much, Wendy, and, uh, I, I wanna say at this time, I think, um, uh, because we have, uh, we have, uh. Mrs. Brown, Ms. Brown here as well, uh, I'd like to invite you to be able to participate in this conversation as well, so, uh. Uh, any, any member, feel free to ask questions, or if you want to have something, if you want to introduce us to as well. Uh, jump right in or put your hand up and I'll, I'll note you're there and then we can talk about it, so, uh, because I do think it's a good discussion, it's, it's about potentially something. Over there, potentially as well, for sure, but I think the whole conversation is important, and I think it's good to, good to have you here for that conversation for sure, so. All right, so good, so on that, on that point, anything you want to start to add to what we said so far?
No, just, it's, um, very appreciative of the ongoing partnership and, you know, I had a really cool discussion with, um. The township about some possible sites, talked about, um. Uh, like. I think that's, that's sensible, it's hard to learn, uh, the humans that identify horses, I'm believing, I don't know if it's because of your true way traffic impact, it's something. Uh, any license, uh, basically, uh, right now. But recognizing that at least for current list, goal is very limited, it's a little longer since childcare spaces. Really appreciate a partnership between the programs to create these offers cases and we're in, continuing partnership to that.
Thank you. Great question. Sir, thank you very much.
I just, I got a couple, um, I'm all, obviously, all for childcare, I think that's a, a, a major issue. Out of the three hundred and ninety seven new licensed childcare space we have, that the county is supposed to have. How many do we have right now from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four? That are licensed, ready to go?
How many will we create?
Yeah.
Um, so, and currently, the director of growth strategy, we have to identify a one year between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty six, we were going to create the spaces. Uh, in absence of very clear guidelines, we made the decision to fall to the creation of our spaces in twenty five and twenty six to give us our money made. Because locating space and renovating space was going to require a plan. And so we recently announced, uh, forty four new childcare spaces going in Indiana operating partnership for the town in Indiana operating. Why I'm saying has been identified as the operator, uh, we continue to be a discussion and expect renovation on that space to be activated shortly with the programs hoping that ended this year. We also have approved spaces in any person, uh, which we need the operator to accept. And have several potential projects in the works for twenty five and twenty six that we can currently.
Question two, we need. Like, uh, uh, before the, before our meeting tonight, you know, uh, we were discussing that we need. Is this not a building, we need space for them to, to play, et cetera, like, at the school? Has, have we, has anybody ever investigated and talked to the fair board about one of their buildings? That we could use it? And Spencerville? To, to, to. Has anybody went to the Spencerville Fair Board? To ask? If we could use one of their buildings to renovate? Get it up and running? As a daycare, I mean, they have, I'm not talking about their regular buildings, Roman buildings, but they do have other buildings that. That, uh, has lots of green space. Ball diamonds, arenas. What a great opportunity, you know, for, so, so their ball dive. Has anybody approached the fair board on? I, I don't care if it's you, or I don't care if it's staff, what was it?
So if not, that's not today, we were just doing, but, you know. Do I have a, I, some potential locations? Not feeling that we have enough information to be able to kind of locate locations, and I would say to explore a lot of different possibilities in our conversation. And as it's improved from their discovery and conversation, this is a type of, we have a.
No, I'm all, you know, if we can help them out, I'm all for it. All for. Uh, yeah, and so this one's an easy one for me, hundred percent, uh, supportive, I mean, it's, uh, if I read this correctly, it's the, the suggestion that. It's the potential for a launtra. Uh, like a, a, you know, a relationship with a launtra to do something like that. Um, my question, Shannon, it's like, these would be part of the sixty six. That, that would be allotted, right?
Yes.
Um. How many would we be looking at for Johnson?
It's very difficult to grill down an actual number because not every project is guaranteed to move our, with the dynamic data. The Ministry of Education gathers the number of childcare spaces that can be built in this base of ratio, so. We gave that overall number of sixty six and it is dependent upon who did, uh. Support, press that project to come with provision, it's also dependent on that, that we've asked for two hundred and forty additional childcare spaces to the Ministry of Education. We made that request in September and still to date have not had a response. And so because of some of the unpredictability of some of these projects. We're not able to drill down the numbers, how much we go to Johnson. And if as time is starting to move on, or, or, from twenty twenty six, it's faster, for me, some of the projects that were the communities that we identified and plan may not actually see childcare spaces. And for some reason, the community is higher than we expected, just based on the ratio, so for example, uh, I'm in the program, it's, uh. A three educators to ten children, father is one of the five, and so just knowing that's our condition requirements, it's hard to say exactly, Tom, or whatever. I know that's not a perfect answer, but it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a juggling act because there's going to be defined operators to deal with.
Right. And so which leads to my second question is, um, will United Counties remain, I know that it was suggested that we could be potential landlords because of. Owning the land, but, um. Who's gonna own? Who's gonna own and operate the daycare would be, is it going to be United Counties?
Um, no, probably in the business of directly operating childcare, no, nor is that our plan. So we have an issue in our F P looking for an operator, uh, to come in and operate that program. And then be able to articulate to them the ongoing needs that we can provide, because all of those things we move here and we can't apply spaces, which means there are significantly reduced. Lots of.
Yeah, okay, and, okay, so in the last one. There's a complexity to this, so. Potentially, I mean, we're a big township, geographically, we're small in, in numbers, if. If we do this partnership here, does it reduce the potential that we can actually add any spaces in Spencerville?
Not necessarily, we still have fingers crossed that we're gonna get some, some additional spaces and. You know, that would open up some of the possibility that you would have in. Many of those same communities that we identified. The longer we wait for those spaces, the more it's, it's way to be able to do that. But again, knowing that we had all the vision of Prescott, Agassid, and this for Colonel together. We also have a project we're working on of those other municipalities to which. May or may not come into fruition, we'll find it in the next couple of weeks, and first I read that that doesn't come into fruition, it just allows our spaces being built. It's a bit of a, a juggling act still at this point, we're trying to create the many.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah, and then, oh, I know, yeah, I just, I just don't wanna, you know, take the ones away from. The potential from Spencerville, but the reality is, we don't, we don't use them, we're gonna lose them to somebody else, and so, somebody's gonna build the spaces somewhere in those three municipalities, so.
Yeah, the difficulty is that, you know, all of those guidelines need to come. Like, we need the space, we need to be able to build it right coming, coming in. And so not having identified a location yet in Spencerville is definitely creating a barrier for us to be confident that this space is.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm certainly a hundred percent supportive of, of this one, obviously, we've talked about it and, um. You know, the synergy with Alontra, I think, is fantastic and it certainly can show off. You know, what, what Alontra's potential is to those that aren't quite aware, but, yeah, and the ability they have, so. It's fantastic.
They find, uh, we had a wonderful conversation with Alontra and they've actually been contracted to undertake similar work in France, in separate. And are on edge of their design in their units and they were able to send to us, so it'll be the exciting part.
Yeah, it's fantastic, good, thank you.
Mr. Reddell? Uh, no, this fantastic program, it's just one. Slight clarification, so if we, we put the building up and we're willing to rent the, the space. Is it the township staff that will be looking for the operator or the counties will be? For the, sort of.
They, they would, they would, they would, they would, and then they would enter and she would service agreement with the operator. For the provision of service and then, uh, provide the funding, so the agreement would be to provide our account to take forward the time we remain with.
Yeah, would our staff have input on that?
Um. Generally speaking, we have a criteria that an operator has to meet because we have to ensure that an operator meets financial liability standards. But certainly, we can continue our partnership with the township staff, if that's, if possibly.
Thank you, great class. Thank you, great class.
So, yeah, I'm one hundred percent behind, um. I'm reading it, but if you've met with Atlanta, uh did you say there would be, might be one available in the village corner?
Uh they are a complex lot, so they aren't necessarily having unit, but they are without the signs for the units to be used at licensed childcare. Or Prince Edward, uh the province of Prince Edward, so. Uh the standards under Ministry of Education would be slightly different, it's not necessarily a direct approach to the sign from um. He young, but certainly during a framework for the understanding of building a licensed childcare, to me that.
What is the matter, I think you could say. We don't want the best food built up there. It's not being used for nothing. They've got a lot of employees that don't live in the village, apparently, that have to take the children. Like maybe you could be, you know, work with them or something.
Yeah. Um I think that we had tried about the old best food building as a possibility, but I believe it might not be available. Uh I certainly was interested when Benson was uh taken down, whether or not that space might be available. Though I'm concerned about Sony and the proximity to ingredient and having a licensed childcare. Uh licensed childcare company legislative by the Ministry of Education and I'm worried that probability to the plans. Might be prohibited in being able to have a licensed childcare program kind of that space.
How many uh?
Yeah, so for example, um so forty four childcare spaces that we have announced in Indiana operate would probably. Be in a space about this size, subdivided in clusters, there's requirements about picking facilities. Of our green space that have to be now offering the facility, um so I expect the facility probably would have between thirty and forty.
Okay. Thank you. Um I had one, actually I had a couple of questions, but so. I know we've had from your prior reports you brought forth, we're we're uh we're one of the municipalities near capacity. We're using all the spaces we pretty much have right now, I believe, and others were not necessarily, so when we talk about that sixty six spaces. Uh the I did some calculation, assuming that number, we think we could, those would be filled as well, do you think, I mean. Chasing more, or do you think that's enough for our area or is it?
Oh, we both would need to have a childcare space for every talent getting it needed. We don't expect that a three hundred ninety seven or the addition to forty, if we get them, is even going to. Close to the total number of licensed childcare spaces needed in the office or families. Uh since the announcement of Seewell and it has affordability, which is wonderful for families. The availability of park time spaces have really gone away because it's more affordable and so. Uh be timed for licensed childcare space, pre the introduction of Seewell was between three and six months. There's now a new change we have. Wow, so we we are not seeing much vacancy in the infant public preschool age group right now.
Okay, uh and uh so. Uh I again, to I I think I echo, I think everybody on council or council said it's over, committee said it, but I'll cancel. Uh that no, uh the idea of having something on our land and being landlord for that, I I have. Doesn't I have any objection to it, like to obviously uh have a numbers guy, I gotta see what the numbers look like, maybe see how that works out, but uh. Certainly, uh my perspective, I think we should be pursuing this as well until uh, you know, we either decide that it's not feasible or. Or we start putting shovels on the ground, so anyways, let's uh let's let's, I think that's the direction I can say that we've given. Um but from the staff perspective. Uh do staff have any concerns with regards to using the pre using the property back here um? Uh for that, you know, land insurance, traffic, things like that, anything, I guess that includes you as well, like. Anybody have any concerns, are we okay? Just to make sure there's nothing we're concerned with this long term.
Uh the property is zone for beauty for use um. I know, I think I'm sorry, it's so early and um I'm I'm really happy to to see the support from the community, you know. We can move forward, but um we're confident in investigating this as an option. Uh I certainly can want committees who need to uh commit to this right now, because all of the information that's just. Uh it's just early in the in the second meeting. We're gonna continue moving forward and we uh keep removing, moving from basic back to committees.
Good, anybody have anything else they wanna add since? Alright, thank you very much for coming, Shannon, this was a great conversation, you can stay the rest of the meeting if you choose to, but we uh. Would understand if you decide on dead balls, they're dealt, okay, what's that term?
Yeah, sort of, yeah, I didn't know, they don't, so. Yeah, well, C A O and myself had a big conversation. As far as the green space goes, it's obviously not a great space back there, so. We can park in the media issue, but I'm sure the line is not right there, but.
Yeah, we would say that, Mike, will we be coming off Albert Street?
That would be fine, yeah.
It would probably imply, so we got everybody, a place structure as well, I would think as well, but we would think that just like I had, I would say. Well, that's part of the rules, isn't it, to have a place structure, or is it? Sorry, I guess we're back to questions again, we got the need to leave.
However, given the various renewed regulations on play equipment inspection, we would recommend a more natural space. But, you know, in discussion.
Sure, okay, sounds good. Okay, so uh yeah, nobody else in the day? Okay, perfect, okay, great, thank you very much again, appreciate that. Uh okay, moving on to six B two, information, community improvement, like community improvement plan report for eighty three. Uh it's easy.
Maybe Chair, our uh the meeting for the plans required by our support we brought to council in the lead to the committee. Committee, so this is part of our, um we have a community plan focusing Cardinal and Sunsville. Both of the plans to keep finding program, A G I for the downtown core area. Um whole property we can use and saw in the property program, the application of building permit fee rebate program and in previous years. The downtown housing improvement program. Um last year, only one application was received, it was a project for. Time box for Spencerville heart attack, heart attack, um. The time of the competition was uh fifteen hundred fifty eight dollars, there's one project outstanding one twenty by two, which we. Um. And the. The chart here in the staff report, I went back probably to the beginning of the C I program, I think it kind of tells the story as you look at. The history there, um. Uh so all all that metrics speak for itself, I think, but uh we do some other things to um meet the goals of the community improvement. Plan that is not just a financial intensive program, so things like our grant application for the um improvements to the cardinal um. Waterfront canal area, um working with the county's former housing coordinator for presentation on additional residential units. Um all help to achieve the goals of community plan, um as well as like the support to the special affair and and it's.
Thank you. Alright, now the third reason. Okay.
Um. To the chair, I have always had an issue with this. Here, uh when I realize that we rest just five minutes in a break.
Yes, sir. Do you wanna, can somebody, can somebody put the recorder in the box? Yeah, we have a five minute, we have a five minute.
So C I P, the C I P plan to our report for point twenty, I'm just gonna tell him. I was about to say, through the chair, the only frustration I've had with this program always is it's limited to. Spencerville Cardinal, you know, and it means it's my business in Crystal Rock or in Roseville or in Johnston and. I remember looping it. It makes first and second classes. But I don't think we can change that, so there's.
Oh, no, you can. Can't speak to that.
Good, can we carry, um I mentioned this is making changes to this. To be wise to we, because we've been strategic, um planning before we mark that, that's simply a big goal, and that's helping to be funded. But also we would use that information to create new plans, so um sure. It it's a process that's people have made of my activities, you know, need a lot of research and um. It does require um public consultation and public meeting, um we can certainly. Create a new plan that answers the whole tangent, or we could revise. The Colonel's that alone, because that's someone, because a lot of that.
Thank you, yeah, thanks, I appreciate that, we did have that discussion in our in our planning meeting, you know, free planning meeting, I guess, if you will, and uh. Uh thought this conversation might come up, and we did talk about, you know, the strategic plan will give us some some good data points to look at to uh to be able to assess. Things like, we've been talking to several months, well, we've talked about it, we think we've, we beat this subject many times at this point. Yeah, so the data will be helpful to be able to have a broader discussion at some point. Mr. Ray, what do you think, Ray?
I mean, I I thank staff for the report and going back as far as you did, it certainly shows the the tail. Um but I also think, you know, like there is investment coming and support, you know, having a C I P that supports small businesses and the ability for those. Small businesses. You know, facade improvements, second floor apartments, whatever, whatever the C I P actually is allowed to do. Um I'm all for changing the area, like there's no doubt there, a modernization of it, but. Um you know, I I think it's serving its purpose, we need to support small businesses and that's that's a way to do it, so. So that's it, okay.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Uh yeah, I think I echoed last uh. That as a council, how I wanted Johnston to be expanded for sure. And and surrounding areas and ob- and obviously, as we can see. Uh there's businesses that are taking advantage of of what we have to offer in the last. Well, I guess, three, four years, I think. So that's that's mine before I, I'm all for it, but we have to just change here. Change your credit. But thanks, Wendy, well done.
Yeah, and I don't have anything else to add out of the conversation besides that, so uh it's good. Alright, moving on to six B four, information leads Grenville, Thousand Islands, Frito Lakes, twenty twenty four business survey report. Sorry, I wasn't. Uh six B three, information, a recap of the digital service squad activities, and I guess uh we did that one as well, looks like.
Sure, so this uh this report is provided by our digital service body, the digital management funding. To uh and then at the end of March, I asked the squad member to provide a recap of the program and in fact, I was for current nonsense. The the report they provided very honorary for our service squad. Um press that image Cardinal, um I think of an update, um. Press that made a civil resolution to the to others with Cardinal to continue to fund the stopping of this program for. Uh three months to give us some time to um assess whether or not we could continue the program. Um but amongst our municipalities, so um it's not with the best at this time, it's just press that. But I think I continue to fund um stopping this program, um. Yeah, I I guess in the, by doing the staff will come back to committee with the with the plan on how this um. This program could continue, but for now, I wanted to um make sure that committee was aware of the work that our squad had done. Um since twenty twenty, um the the with the main street program, so the information there. Um for committee and some testimonials and also a plan for um the next three months with the squad to continue assisting the. The businesses and help them improve their online presence. Also, that's a squad member to um help out with the river reporting campaign and related to businesses along the route that be donated to. On top of the public quarter businesses, um so that's a squad member to help our resourcing the digital analysis. Similar to what we do, um with the businesses that they support, now we have um digital communication is important. Um our municipality, so I think there's some opportunities that um the chair should achieve, they'd be able to help at times. And a protocol continues um providing support to our to our businesses over the next three months.
Thank you very much, uh I'm just gonna go around to anybody that have any comments. If I, sure, um you know, I'm I'm in my preparations for for Wednesday chamber. Uh breakfast, you know, a question that I get because I'm a small business owner. Uh as well as a mayor, ma- mayor is how you balance those, you know, balance both those hats and. In preparation for that, we do a little bit of research and you find out that ninety six percent of businesses across Canada are considered small businesses. And that are fifty employees or less. The digital service squad went to to help out, I I can't remember what, then I think it's eighty thousand businesses in Ontario. Uh during the pandemic times, there's your edge in. Um eighty thousand businesses across Ontario during those times that were were helped and funded through the digital service squad. And I know that was just the beginning, but I I do would say that I think that um it's it's unfortunate. To mean that the province can't find a way to continue that funding. And and I guess, you know, I don't know if we can afford to continue that funding on our own without uh without help from the province. But what I would encourage small business owners to do, um you know, we do have an M P P, that M P P is, you know, he has a lot of. Say and a lot of a lot of clout, and I think for our local businesses that want to see this and and maybe we should even do it. You know, the the mayors or the councils on behalf of the digital service squad is uh is asked, uh you know. Uh M P B Clark to, you know, to voice our concerns and that we want that. You know, that we don't wanna see it end, we wanna see the the province fund it, because we certainly can't. Afford to go that alone and take on that responsibility, but you know, it is valuable for our small businesses, it is a way that we. Uh you know, it is a tool that we have to help support small business and and I'd hate to see it go away. That's it.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else?
Uh no, I'm just echoing what uh it's up in June, is that right, the funding?
The funding was uh over there.
Oh no, we sorry, uh but we extended.
We've extended.
We did, so I I I I do echo what the mayor says, we should get on our high horse as a council and send a letter to our M P P. I would like, you know, express that we're very, very disappointed in in drawn on and we need this. For a small business in Lees and Grand, and then uh, you know. Look hard at getting that money back.
So the share, we can certainly do that, we uh press that up compared to a resolution, you know, we continually supported their resolution at the same time. We extended the the funding, so if we if we have more to say, or would like to share more, I like I can't say enough good things about this program, so.
Yeah, I think if if, you know, I can, and I'm not sure how I can do this, but I mean, I I have no issue with putting a letter. You know, on behalf of council. Um. To, I mean, I know that we signed the resolution, but I have no issue sending that to, you know, the small business minister and sending it to our M P T. And, you know, we've done letters like that. Uh before, when we're trying to rally, for I have no issue putting a pen and paper, but I need to make sure that I have the. The nodding of heads that that would be an allowable thing and and an okay from staff that that I write that. Yeah. I I mean, I for me here at the table, I haven't heard anybody's say that they don't support it. Um if they said that they didn't support the continuation, then maybe I wouldn't write the letter, but with. A nodding of heads that everybody wants to see it continued and thinks that it's a provincial responsibility to do so, I'm happy to write it, so. This side of the table is nodding.
Yeah, I don't care who writes it, as long as the M P P Clark gets all of it. That they know that we mean business, you know, that we want this to continue, like a very, very important for. For self, so let's uh get behind it, I think we should send a a letter to press, well, we'll send it off, anyone who has the support. Press comes best.
Oh, thanks, good, good, alright, moving on to six B four, uh information leads Grenville, Thousand Islands, Frito Lakes, twenty twenty four. Business survey report.
Yeah, this is an information and the profile that's from the business court working group. You'll see this is um officially being launched and distributed tomorrow, but you guys have the early. Um was it, was it particularly?
It's both of them, yeah.
Um. So with many partners, um the business court working group, you know, and that's a survey um each year. We credit or credit is due, this is live, I would like to support. We credit or credit it to this is live by the by the time to support which is part of the. Um, twenty two of our recurring businesses sharing feedback, um, three hundred and sixty three that is visible overall in this area. Um. And um it's it's valuable feedback that we have from our uh from our businesses. It's. Uh, nicely be able to compare at this record to um the wider region. And if a lot of these questions on purpose are kept the same here over here, I think we want your items to maybe change slightly, but. Um, we really will be able to, you know, go back and see what needs to change. Twenty points. Continue to be the survey. The value of information that could also be used to form a community improvement plan. And others will have.
Yep, excellent. Okay.
If I may, I I think, you know, it's a fantastic um um piece of data that you can go through and get, you know, a a whole lot of things. From, you know, one of those things that I pulled from when I read it was um it's on page nine and it was um. It was the graph that, you know, what employers looking for when they hire. The number one thing at forty eight percent or fifty percent was soft soft skills. And if you look closely at it, academic requirement is zero. Not one respondent said that academic required like that that your degree mattered. It was everything else. Everything else mattered. You know, and I did it just as an employer, you know, I feel the same way in mind. We can teach it, right? Like, we can, we can, we can teach you what you need to know. And you show up, you have like all the good soft soft skills because we can help. There's so much help for training. Uh, out there from different levels. It's it's just, it's. I I just thought that that was really a good. You know, anybody who's looking for a job today and feels that they don't have what it takes to get to the next level, they're probably underestimating themselves. And there's tons and tons of opportunity for folks today, whether you made it through with all the academic requirements or not, and I think that that's very clear. Um, you know, that people might sell themselves a little bit short. Or.
I think I heard that for the day in your chat. Wasn't there a discussion that they. Were the same thing? You cut their head? That better help. You know, if. How. We can share, 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 train, train, train and stuff. I know all the time. Yeah. I don't know some, sorry, I forgot. I'm annoyed. But yeah, I I agree. I mean, I just think. Well, there's a good example of uh whatever page you. Uh, that is about how important our uh. How important the uh. Uh, digital service squad is like thirty three, sixty nine percent or or what in uh self-employed, thirty? What's what is it? The stats there? In our township, it's employed thirty three. Thirty three?
Yeah.
Self-employed. So, I mean, that's kind of uh shows us how important that that the, like I said, the. The recap of the digital service squad is so important to us.
Yeah, well, until that point, Mr. Deputy Mayor, you know, on page eleven is the survey about uh uh growing your business and it sits in pre-sale by marketing, right? And it's that that's what they that's for her to help, right? So. You know, uh, I mean, it would be nice to get it included, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And we struggled with it as well. It's so. All right, anything else, Mr. Deputy Mayor? There. It's good.
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Well done. You guys over here? All right, good. Uh, moving on then to uh six C one. So uh we have the record we're here to talk about the uh uh recreation program updates.
Thank you. Um, so the last session of the out fitness class wrapped up on Tuesday night. Uh, pickleball will begin on April twenty third at the Spontical Arena. Pickleball will run on Tuesdays and Thursdays from six P M to eight P M. Uh, the township is going to be offering a free mobility workshop on Saturday, April twenty first. Here at Johnstone Committee Center. Um, summer camp registration opened up on Monday, April first online. Uh, each summer camp will have a each summer camp that will have a session. So the lesson registration will be available in person only starting. Uh, May sixteenth from twenty P M to seven P M at the South Edward Community Center. May twenty third from one to seven P M at the ingredient on the water. And Saturday, June twenty fifth on that hand, so off time up to the uh South Edward Community Center. Um, again, this year the township is collaborating with local businesses, the industries to organize a cleanup and barbecue on April twenty seventh. The township will be providing garbage bags, gloves and own garbage collection. And there is a little town store. Going on for wild planting along County Road two. Uh, ingredient will be conducting its own cleanup on April eighteen. The township is also providing breakfast. And the township is hosting community-wide pitching weeks scheduled from April fifteenth and fifteenth.
Excellent. That's your bad, you think, you know?
And I think it's a fantastic uh. A lot of things, good thing there are, so. It's right up.
It's well, I'm good, David. Very busy, yeah.
All right, yeah, through the chair. Uh, thanks, Rachel, for the report. Um. Question would be in regard to uh summer programming and day camps. How are they? Are they not? How are they filling up? Are they filling?
Uh, we'll be sure to. Um, we'll all sign our account.
They were about seventy five percent. Seventy now, already?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, I mean, April first.
Yeah, they felt fast, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They're good. Um. And uh two, I guess maybe two more questions. Um. From a staffing uh perspective, I guess this is more of programming than staffing, but are we going to? I've noticed, you know, the social media portion of advertising for uh a lifeguarding and B camp counselors. Are we in good shape as far as that's true?
I believe our camp counselor positions are are pretty full. Um, we're still. Working our way through the lifeguard portion. Um, it's good that our pool director has the qualifications to teach. All the qualifications that are required and there will be some late. Um, classes in June to help accommodate some of the kids that are needing those qualifications to be able to fill the slots.
Continues to be a.
It does, yeah. So we do have uh Rachel and and Kim have worked together and there are going to be two or three of our camp counselors that. Are sort of also they'll teach lessons in the morning. Which they'll be teaching their own, like the kids in the day camp will be back forward and uh they'll go back there. What they would they can, so. We're really maneuvering things around to try to accommodate a large number. Can we anticipate that each session will be filled with uh two with three hundred and twenty spots? We're at seven.
Yeah, that's great. Anything else, Mr. Mayor? Uh, you have one. Couple of.
Well, what was that?
Something. Um. Uh. From a programming uh perspective, um, we took the ice out spring, right, earlier. Um, we did have, you know, one request for, you know, the ice to be in. Were there any follow-ups, any further requests? Uh, beyond beyond having?
There were um. Through the chair, through the mayor, there were a a couple for just our rental here and our there. And the one that has contacted me in the last three or four weeks for our experience, those have been directed with a phone number of contact information. But as far as substance, as far as hours.
Nothing large, no.
Yeah, and I don't know the exact numbers of uh to what. Press got us probing right now.
I'll have to watch her.
You know, um, but as I indicated, I mean, two weeks ago, that. Last year, we took the ice in the seventh day. Yes.
Uh, last one is we've had a fantastic partnership with Greenfield Global and with Ingredion on on paying for a good Porsche, well, five thousand dollars, I think has been there. Has been their number. Um, have we heard from them in regard to that this year or or do I need to do?
Yeah, no, we, yeah, no, I I've I've reached out to them and we also do have another partner that's come on, on board. Giant Tiger has come on board and that five thousand dollar fund will go to help offset some of the costs of our day camps.
Fantastic, that's great.
There'll be a onsite photo um at the end of date, but uh we're still working on the fourth one. But I'm still negotiating.
Good, awesome. That is fantastic to hear. Thank you, thank you.
Bye, Luke. Bye, Daniel. Bye, John. Excellent.
That's awesome.
Yes, I I just have one. There's a. And I really, I really don't know what they call it, but there's a seniors at night. Program where they swim together. Is that right? What's that called? Or is it? Is it available? I just saw it with this one. Sorry?
I know you're talking the aqua.
That's it. Yes, aqua. Sorry. So I got all kinds of compliments and spencible. Uh, about having and hopefully, is it back this year?
It's offered that, yeah, I believe it's four nights a week.
Good.
Between the two pools.
That, yeah, that's fine because the people in Spence will just love it. Some of the ladies, they came up to me and said.
Yeah, the instructor that does our road spots here that is being.
And who doesn't vote with that? Uh, Sue Turner? No?
No. It's dead, right?
Oh. Well, I'm glad that's on. Thank you so much. You get to tell the ladies now. They'll be happy again for another year. So thank you.
Well done. Cause we're held cancer space. We had something else?
Yeah, I just wanna uh say something to the to the. See, uh. I'm glad. I've got a lot of compliments from a lot of people to the. Recreation provided dog booby bags down at the Legion. Then I've had people inquire about it. If they have it at the pool area or in the big park or in uh boat subdivision. I mean, everybody talks about how nice it is that the recreation provides the legs and they're usable, so.
Through the chair to uh council. Well, uh, we only have obviously down along the road from, um, we have here at the dog park. Um, but in our other parks, we do not have the the dog eggs. We just have.
No, they started that off.
Each little unit are all one one piece.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you very much. And uh I didn't have much to add. I actually, I think it's probably too early to ask about uh. Favorite events coming up and stuff like that. I'm sure we'll see those on Facebook. We'll probably see it in a bunch of reports. On Facebook, sorry, on various social media.
Yeah, and social.
Yep, exactly. And uh and just a great report. I mean, I think uh I'd like to say that. Council all believes this, and I hope that's true, but uh but it's a great year. I think for just just all the stuff we're doing for recreation these days is really going well. That he doesn't do a great job and yeah, there we go. It was worth the wait for it to happen in another. All right, good. Um, okay, anything else? Anybody else? Okay, all right. All right, then we're gonna move on now to six C two, which is the Cardinal Boat Launch fee schedule.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Um, so I heard this, in the summer meeting, I put a discussion forward. Um, and gave a a number of options. Um, a discussion about a launching for residents, non-residents. Um, and what I've. Got out of that discussion, unless I was wrong, that the feeling amongst the committee members at that time were. That there should be more of a charter directed at. Non-residents as opposed to residents. Um, so this um action I did tonight basically speaks to that. Um, it talks about the same um discussion that we've had. In the December meeting where there would be two different options. They can go online. From their home-based computer or there will be a Q R code at the waterfront where they would log in and. There would be a payment process. It would be a one-time fee. I put a fee of twenty five dollars and that would be for a season. So it's not per launch. So if someone's ranked, you know, going five times, then it would be not, you know, obviously. For the season. Um. As far as the enforcement goes, it would not be aggressively done. By our own personal officer, but he would, when someone goes down and registers or someone registers at home. He would get the identification of the license plate of the vehicle and the original. Um, so he would be able to check when he's on, so. Um, if it was a vehicle that he would be able to determine where they are from and whether or not they did.
Deputy Mayor, who uh?
Let me start it. Yeah, it's good. Um, I get to start. Uh, twenty five dollars. That sounds a little low. I I I can.
Well, that's up for discussion, right?
No, no, I know, and I I can accept that for this year to just get the ball rolling. And let's see, you know, what kind of, uh, probably my biggest issue though is how come we're not charging for the dive? You know, we've got guys going down there for the fishing. And you've got a ton of people going up there, dying. And.
Because.
I was always for to do both, never just both myself.
Well, I mean, we we even had discussion in December about the Gallopanal.
Yeah, but I.
Let's just kind of see where we are at.
Right, and I agree.
Uh, because, you know, what, there was a way that this system works that we could do is, I mean, we can make everybody. Log in. And then if they're out of town, then there would be an option where they would have to pay. The locals. Yeah, and we all go to the street.
And you get all of that.
And you're once.
Yeah.
So if if the mayor is in watching these boats six times and he's done it once, then he doesn't have to do it every time. Um, so then that would be an idea for us to be able to track exactly how many. Residents are using it and obviously you will know the non-residents, because they'll be the ones that will be paying the twenty five dollars for you.
I'm all for what you're doing with the boat. I just like to add. To the dive because I know we're gonna get slammed on that. And I agree with you. We've got all kinds of out-of-towns from New York go and get back that goes up there. And they should pay their twenty five bucks for the season.
The Gallopanal is the same, like the divers or the Gallopanal.
Yeah, well, let's just take it down at the Legion for this year and see how it goes then.
But if you're gonna. Just my opinion, if you're gonna rush to the dive, you gotta go up both sides. Like, because they're only two pounds per.
Yeah.
They'll park at the northern part and walk down.
Yeah.
So they do that now.
Are those one.
How do you mean the northern part?
Well, they'll park at the Gallopanal and just swim across.
Yeah, they walk.
Real?
Well, they they put their pack on, they walk.
Yeah.
And they just went down.
Yeah.
They inflict their best.
Yeah.
Yes, uh. Do the chair.
I think one of the reasons why I was in to extend it to the divers was. You recall the ball? Everybody loved the wording on the signage that uh that that we put up with respect to the boat launch. So we signaled that with with respect to the boat launch. We did not do the same with respect to the dive sites. So it would be.
Okay, yeah.
It would be a surprise.
Can we make a sign up?
But it is certainly something that. Any of the human put some signs up stating like that.
Both.
You know, back to next, the next dive season, the. The.
There.
We could. Sorry, through the chair, we can also potentially do a courtesy sign at both dive sites at the end to register so we know where they're coming from.
Sure. And make the note that it's gonna be charged in twenty twenty five.
So do we have to update the recommendation by this or do we just, this will be different conversation later on?
Yeah, that's why. Definitely, it's a different conversation.
Good. Did I add that now that we're on to the boat launch? Um, we asked for new signs, no weight last year, and they're supposed to have been here.
They were put up.
Where? We got two way down by ten that starts lying on the ground. That one, no weight. An old one, the last I was down.
We looked them up in late in late in the year. And you play the ball, yeah, late fall.
Okay, I know I've been down. I was just told that they're not.
Are they located? Excuse me, fair.
Um, they are the one the one rated in front of the uh, well, I mean, I haven't looked this spring. Um, there was one right in front of one Peter plant.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
One farther down.
And where's the others? Sorry?
One farther down towards the Cogan place.
That's one I I I didn't see it. I saw the old one lying, but I hadn't seen it. I've never seen the delus.
We put two up in the fall.
Well, my dog, they're every day.
Anyways, that's uh.
I would like to buy under in cars as well, that's fine.
Alright, it's good.
No, excellent, well done, thank you, let's see how it goes. Yeah, I I can't wait until fishing open day, I'll be down at midnight. Very, yeah, I will, not much.
Mr. Mayor? Uh no, I think it's, it's been a, been a long, long time coming, we've talked. About doing this, we've warned about doing this, it's, you know, it's time, I mean. The investment that this council wants to continue to make to the area. Um you know, there's people, lots of people from outside that want to use the boat launch, and you know, it requires a bit of upkeep and. And you know, hopefully, this isn't a lot of money this year by any stretch, but. Hopefully, that little bit of money goes towards making sure that we keep it in the kind of shape that that it should be in and that we can be proud of and. And it's fantastic now, and I'd like to see it grow and and continue to be fantastic, so. It's a small, it's a small. Thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, whoever has the answer can, I'd get a better definition of passive enforcement approach. To the chair, to uh Council Marpella, our bylaw enforcement officer is not gonna make a sole trip down. To the boat launch, but when he's in the village on other matters. He may go down and and uh take a look at what's being brought there. It won't be enforced by myself or by my staff, it'll be the bylaw enforcement officer that will make the. Will make that uh inspection of the vehicles.
So if you, if I may continue, if the chair, if he sees a a truck there with a trailer with seats and doesn't recognize, what's the next move?
Well, there would be two options, one would be a letter indicating that. He would be required to obtain an permit or um potentially a fine. I would think he would do the letter first.
So the whatever the. How would you find everyone's truck?
He would have the.
Render license plate, license plate.
A license plate, so the bylaw enforcement officer will be given kind of an Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah, I understand that part, but if that license plate isn't on that spreadsheet, how does he connect that license plate to the owner of the truck? Does he, does he have like a database like?
He has, he has, um he has the option to to get that information, not on site, but he does have that option.
Cool.
No, thank you, that's their smell.
No, I'm good, I'm really happy with it. Alright.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, to you, sir. There are a couple of implications to it, right, I mean, once we have to actually create a, or create a, yeah, it's it's sort of. Reopen that bylaw and and added a fee schedule of whatever the, whatever the fee schedule is, and then I don't know how you set fines, but.
Yeah, I think through through the, through through the chair, first that would be uh bending the uh. Sort of what we call Recreation E-schedule to incorporate. A boat launch. Fee for a lot, per per lot as an instant value. Uh instituted, and then if the, if the feeling is that. Um there's a number of will or demand to do to go through the process of getting the. The short form wording, give that some machine a hard on with respect to. To that, and that should be, that can be something that that could be done, um I'm I'm kind of. Well, I think uh. Protest, and then she usually started, you can start to see what that update is, if we don't get. Uh if if we, we see little update in that season, then I think that it. That it is something that we have to become more aggressive on, if there, if if there's a willingness to get that uh. Uh what we'll call that out of the venue, but I don't think I would want to go to the step of uh of true award wording. For this upcoming season, that's just what what our condition was, and I I had a step.
Yeah, I think at my level too, I mean, I know, you know. We're frustrated with the the length of time to get something in place for this, but at the same time, I think our, my. Understanding was this year would be more of a data collection here, uh anyway, to see if we can get people to utilize the app. See if we can get them to sign up, and then take what we get at the end of the year, analyze that a little bit, and figure out how we can. We can implement something strong, you know, that that does apply to, you know, boaters at the northern end and. And then the divers and and to just, you know, just the boat launch, so. That was always been, I think my interpretation was, you know, let's collect as much data as we can, make it as easy as we can to collect that data.
Yeah, we need data.
Have a bigger discussion.
I I think we're really, you're. It may be no different than if our governor answered the question of that, listen, you send that notice. Right?
That's right.
The vote, the voting seat is in the center of the summer plus.
I just hope John's down there on uh May fifth, that's all.
And the one thing that I didn't mention in this that I I overlooked was that um. During the Bass Anglers Fishing Derby, those the, those boats would be exempt.
Yeah, good call.
Those were down. That's a smell. That's whatever it is, exactly, he's at the end of the table.
When would you start implementing this, like when, when will it affect?
Be ready for open soon.
May fourth.
May fourth.
Okay, uh well, I love how long it's taken, to be honest, I'm not in favor of this, I don't think that's a surprise to anybody, I'm still not in favor of this, to be honest. Uh you know, I think that uh it's um gonna be, it's gonna take more time than it is to manage it, than it is to actually have it, and uh. Um you know, even if we locked in four hundred on residents, we're looking at about ten grand, which, you know, now that I'm here, I have somebody down there keeping an eye on. License plates and stuff as well, I really think it's gonna negate all that effort, so.
Clean air.
Hey, I'm allowed to have my opinion, right? Anyways, so uh you know, I, I guess I'm not gonna support this, I uh I'm not in favor of it at all, so. All I'm gonna say to that. I've said it.
So there, you're totally allowed, you're.
Yeah, yes, but there is a. But there is a recommendation, so do I have a mover?
I I don't know all where, but like, I'm a bylaw enforcement officer, it's like, probably there can already. Go over there, but I'm asking is like, yeah, there probably would be some, there's probably going to be some spot checks, if 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 more spot checks. And it really is that every time that he's in in the area, it's not that it would become, because what we really want is, is is. We don't want to punish, what we actually want was compliance and get get to get some additional data.
Sure, and i- am I wrong in thinking, I know we can't direct bylaw, right, I I get that. But, I mean, if we have a a clean yards initiative for six months of the year. And that's going to be the focus for bylaw, and council gives that as, you know, as the focus, we can do that, so. If we wanted for April, May, and June of next year, for that focus for bylaw to be on enforcement at the ramp, then we could see. Added enforcement, but we gotta get the data this year to to sort of back up why we might do that, am I correct in thinking that we can do that or no?
Thank you, through the, through the, through the chair, with with the limited amount of dollars.
Yeah.
And it's beneficial uh for everybody that that have sort of. What we would consider the the priority initiatives for, you know, certain, make a certain mind here, right? But you're wanting, not gonna be able to do, yeah, right, so 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 to speak, so I think this year, that's why it's just sort of.
The important tip, the opening day, sad and suddenly visually.
Alright, we have a mover for this, by the way. Yeah, you're moving. By cancer Martel. So there you go, all in favor? I'm sorry, any other discussions, sorry, it doesn't matter, nobody's, call it four to one for that. Alright, so um moving on then to. Number seven, inquiries and notices of motion, does anybody have any?
I do, yes, yes. Uh someone, can you look into that, or or no way signs, see it through up, down the fire. Appreciate that, thank you, and we have um cleanup in Johnstown, Sarah. Uh this Saturday. From nine to eleven, we're gonna meet in the corner across from the church. In Johnstown, there'll be two, two of our township trucks, they'll supply us with bags and gloves. And we'll be putting the garbage in the, in their trucks, so it's nine to eleven this Saturday. And that's all I have.
You're welcome, sir. Just a real quick inquiry, uh um to the C O, and have we, there was a a a large discussion last week. At United Counties about um administrative penalties.
About what?
Administrative penalties, and and while I'm not initially. Um. In favor of, you know, like just my initial rate, but the more it gets discussed there, the more. Um. The more willing I am to have a different viewpoint or a different discussion, and I'm wondering if my inquiry is, you know. Uh has staff put any time or effort or thought into to an amp um instead of a P O A? And do we have any idea how that could financially impact us or or not?
Uh through 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 the chair, there really hasn't, I don't think there's been any sort of, I mean, saving time into. Into sort of the review of the uh, you know, the expenses, you know, the P O A. And what is.
Certainly, you know, and I know this isn't a back and forth, it's just an inquiry, um there. The move away from P O A seems to be happening at at county's level for sure, right? I get the feeling that there's a very big turn of that happen there, um and I. I think regardless, I think that term's gonna hap, like my reading the table is that that term's gonna. Going to happen, and I think maybe, you know, my, I guess my inquiry is if we can. Uh figure out if that happens, how does that impact? How does that impact us, and maybe that's a discussion we can have at a further meeting and get everybody to second one of the biz and something like that. That's it. That's what Martel, nothing, this is fail.
Yeah, I'm. Isn't the chairs and C O, uh today I was driving uh over by the pool, and I noticed that. The sidewalk, it's on, and then she was on a tow truck. I wanted to see what happened, that's what did the breakdown, but, and anyway, they were telling me that they're towing it from karma to Spencer. So if they, they tow it there, then they go home, back and tow it back, we're getting charged twice for towing. My inquiry is, we drive to the back hole everywhere in township, we drive the most roads where in township, and we drive the divide hole. What is the difference driving that? It's something about Spencer. Than any other piece we work on, we have, but we drive all of the township.
So through the, through the chair, um there are us, uh. The caption of respect to the. Um sidewalk allow going from this end to Spencer, and during the winter. So we have made arrangements, uh so in in respect to. Your tour had their, at at their dome for the, for our delivery. Um so uh online direction to public works manager, when you get the company to. Do the sweeping in central, realize the machine is a kernel, and I think they have, I think we show, because it was. Sure, at uh at, it can tell the table on. A team of, of nine of the unit, that distance, that is. So small with respect to, you know, the size of the unit, I get with the lower, with the bylaw. Some of those larger units, it's more visible, some, some, some of those stretches on her remote. Uh fixed in road, they're 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 one areas, and the feeling was that. Well, that shuttle cost is that it wasn't going to be uh that frequent, that it would be like a one-day. Item where the, where they shut it back there, side off, so we don't, Lord, that one. So um I wasn't, I I wasn't aware that we did, it was sent off the days. So, but that, that, that was, that was realized, um. The 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 original intent was, was to actually shut it back and buy. Uh so that wasn't, it wasn't being sent. I certainly. We are not.
Okay, uh then we're moving on to number eight, which is that question period, there's nobody left of their audience today, then we have any from the media at all?
No, uh no, in part, it's.
Perfect, okay, so we're going to go to number nine, it's closed session, uh the closed session for tonight. Uh has some contents in it from meetings that were, were delayed to this meeting, so uh. As a result, at this point in time, I'm gonna hand over the chair of this meeting to uh the mayor, your nation. There you go. Um alright, there, we need, we need a motion to go to closed, correct?
That, that is correct, and my apologies, uh they not, uh.
The sections are, it's no big deal, I'll, I'll read them, and then I'll ask for a mover in a second, okay? And then we'll, we'll just take a really brief uh three or four minute break, and everybody clear the room, and we'll be good, okay? Alright, so um it's moved that A um council proceed into a closed session. Uh at eight forty-eight. To discuss um section two thirty-nine two B personnel matters about an identifiable individual. Including municipal board or local uh board employees, specifically the minutes of close session dated June the fifth, twenty twenty-three. B, section two thirty-nine two B personnel matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, specifically. Administration, and C, section two thirty-nine two C, a proposed repending acquisition or disposition of land. By the municipality or local board, specifically buyers of property, I need a mover. Moved by Counsel Ward, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dilavah, uh discussion before we go into closed session. Here, we're seeing none, then I'll call the question ongoing into closed. All in favor? Okay, we closed five minutes. We wouldn't have, I was already ready to remove a couple of things, like the sign. Yep, okay, so um we're coming out of closed session, I need uh a mover and a second there for for the motion I'm about to read. Um the council, the uh meeting of closed session does now end at nine fifty-seven uh P M. And we uh began the open session at nine fifty-seven P M, so I need a mover. Uh for that, uh Counsel Ward, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dilavah, all in favor of coming out of closed session, back into open? Okay, good, we're back in open session, reporting out of um uh closed session. Um uh council met under section two thirty-nine two B personnel matters about identifiable individuals, including. Municipal or local board employees, specifically the minutes of closed session, um. Minutes dated June fifth, uh twenty twenty-three, the motion reads um. Uh to approve approval of those minutes. Uh from June fifth, twenty twenty-three, uh I need a mover, some of, seconder. Take your pick, uh all in favor? Okay, the minutes are passed, um item B that we discussed, so. Uh section two thirty-nine uh two B personnel matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, specifically. Administration, uh council received an update regarding this matter uh in closed session. Um and item C, which is section two thirty-nine two C, a proposed repending acquisition or disposition of land. But in miss that municipality or the local board, specifically uh buyers' world property. Um and council did provide uh direction to the C O. Uh that's it for reporting out of a closed session, um I uh the meeting of open. Of of, excuse me, the meeting of the, I guess this is technically a community. Of of excuse me, the meeting of the, I guess this is technically a community development committee meeting, right? So the community development uh committee meeting of Monday, April fifth. Um I'm gonna call for adjournment. I need a mover to.
So.
adjourn. Uh and Counselor Smale seconds. All in favor for adjournment?
Nine five.
There we go.
They're disparate.
Very amazing.
Nine five.